Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this special meeting. Today is January twenty-second, and it is five oh five. Can we please have roll call?
Trustee Hodges. Trustee Flores.
Present.
Trustee Young.
Here.
Vice President Amboy.
Present.
And President Fox.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, let's do our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion for Agenda Item One C, Adoption of Our Agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Agenda Item One C.
A second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Hodges.
Aye.
Trustee Flores.
Aye.
Trustee Young. Vice President Amboy.
Aye.
And President Fox.
Aye.
And the motion passed.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to be on Agenda Item Two, Informational Study, Government Board Study of Closures and Consolidation of Schools. It is recommended that the governing board receive information and study the material provided.
Good evening, board members and community. So, this evening, we're getting close to bringing a decision to the end around school closures and consolidation. We want to take this opportunity this evening to walk through the options that the board has been considering, talk about the timeline, and also provide direction to staff so we are prepared for our regular board meetings in February where a decision will be made. So, a bit of background, specifically, we have our VCUSD actual and projected enrollment, and this is projected out to the years 2032. We work with our demographers to make sure that, can you all see? Let me sit back. We make sure that this data, as you can see, going back to 2020 into our most recent enrollment data, we have considered, we can still continue to see a decline. We are seeing some flattening out in the out-years, but the decline has continued. In a previous dataset, we showed the ten-year outlook from the past, where we had in 2014, 15, upwards of fourteen thousand-plus students. So, in a ten-year period, we, more than a ten-year period, we've lost roughly five thousand students as a district. So, we had some district goals regarding closure and consolidation. We are looking at rightsizing the district, ensuring that the responsible stewardship of public property and of program resources. We know that having nineteen comprehensive schools and an adult school for a population of nine thousand students is significant, and we know that we can provide resources to a much more concentrated resources if we were to right-size the district. We want to capitalize on the substantial programmatic benefits. We've had discussions about some schools being small, where there's limited resources based on the number of teachers you might have at a grade level. We know that quality instruction is greatly improved when teachers can collaborate, and they have people at their grade level to collaborate. We also know that when students and families have options for different programs, that we see a greater increase in the commitment to our district, but also to the programs that are served. We want to realize the financial benefit and avoid unnecessary interventions by fiscal oversight entities. That specifically speaks to our status in receivership. We have made our final loan payment. However, we're not in the clear quite yet. We have some measures we need to take. Some of those measures include rightsizing the district, and that includes potential closure and consolidation of schools. So, the county and the state is looking at us to see our actions. They're watching us to see that we do the necessary steps so we don't go back into receivership or need to borrow any more money like we did twenty years ago. We want to ensure that the closed or consolidated school sites are not left vacant. That was clearly something that the board is adamant about. And so, we held a seven-eleven committee where we looked at what we could do with the properties. We looked at five specific school properties, and the seven-eleven committee did give us a report where they offered us the ability to surplus property as needed. Lastly, we are forward-thinking. We want to make sure our plan accommodates future development. We've discussed the potential development on Mare Island. We've discussed other property developments throughout the city. And what we realize is our, we have the capacity among our schools, we're currently sitting at forty-six percent capacity, to grow as needed. Even with school closures, we would have space and availability for students that come and join us. So, this is a reminder of our timeline, how we got here. So, back in April of 2023, the board engaged Total School Solutions to draft the Equity Impact Analysis Report. That is, a report is necessary when you are considering school closures. You look at the demographic makeup of a school, you look at the programs that are offered, you look at potential receiving schools, and you do comparative studies. There was a board workshop, a presentation of the report, and the proposed budget reductions back in January of 2024. So, just over, almost a year ago, that discussion occurred. And at that point, it was identified that the district would be looking at a reduction in budget of over four million dollars in years 25, 26. In April, the board gave next steps for closure and consolidation process, which included the formulation of a seven-eleven committee to look at properties. That committee was formed in September of this past year, in 2024, and the committee did hold four meetings, and those are listed there. The recommendations of the seven-eleven committee came back to the board in November, and in that, there was designations of surplus or properties declared as surplus. Now, the Equity Impact Analysis Report is required by law through Assembly Bill 1912, and whenever we consider schools for closure, we need to present this report to the board and at a public meeting to allow for public feedback, and then that report is brought back in another meeting for a secondary approval. So, that report was presented close to a year ago. So, there are some considerations that our legal team will talk about a little bit later with the EIA as we move forward.
But when we click, that was for just a certain X number of schools, not others that the board may consider, which so the public knows would delay or wouldn't be this round or this phase?
Correct. When this EIA was initially formulated, there was five schools that were reviewed in this process. After the report of the seven-eleven committee and the recommendations was given to the board in November, we can go back and look, in November twentieth, the board did direct staff to look at additional schools. Now, those additional schools will be considered as part of a Phase Two Reduction Plan or Consolidation Plan. Right now, we're going to be focusing on Phase One, that are schools that will be impacted in 25, 26. We know that our job is not done when it comes to reductions and consolidation, and we'll be returning to look at school closures or consolidations for the year 26, 27. So, a bit of data. We have the schools listed here on the side, or parts of the schools that were reviewed as part of the Equity Impact Analysis Report. Now, all these schools listed were not up for closure consideration. Some of the schools listed were listed because they would be impacted as potential receiving schools. But it's important that we look at both sets of schools when we did the report. So, you can see, for example, if we will go across, Stefan Manor is a TK-to-five school. The current enrollment as of January seventeenth. The total capacity for that school site, so these are the number of potential empty seats if we utilized all the classroom spaces for classrooms. It's not to say these spaces are not utilized, they are utilized, but as regular classrooms, that's how many students we could put there, leaving us the available capacity. And we did that for each one of these school sites. As you can see in the red numbers, we do have space at many of these schools, at all of these schools. Vallejo Charter, we don't add the capacity question because it doesn't follow that pattern for us. Do we have questions around this specific data, comments from the board?
We don't have the capacity of charter school, Vallejo Charter school. We don't have the capacity.
So, Mitch will look for the capacity. We do know it has, that facility has large capacity, as you mentioned. It was a middle school, junior high school. The reason we don't list the capacity for the charter school is because that school, being a charter, has the ability for us to place it in different locations. So, that capacity could shift depending on where it's housed. In our previous sports study session, there was concern, questions about how much money or how much revenue could be saved when we close schools. And so, the team did look at the analysis for these school sites and how much savings would be incurred for general fund and LCAP. This is noting that not every staff member at a school would be eliminated because, for example, teachers, certain programs would travel with students. So, this is typically operational costs, school principal, office manager, custodial staff, those types of positions that land in this chart. I also want to note that these are ongoing savings. So, these are not one-and-done savings. When you close a school, you're essentially saving that year after year.
For the public, because some people last night at the town hall were asking about, well, Lincoln School only has seventy-some students, why don't you consider? Well, since it doesn't have the equity report current, you can't, and it will not be done in time, it cannot be considered for this coming school year. That's why, to answer that question from last night. For Vallejo Charter School, are the numbers of savings available for that?
So, Vallejo Charter, because it's a dependent charter, doesn't fit within our same-budget stream. They have their own separate budget stream. So, we wouldn't realize, if Vallejo Charter closed as a school, we wouldn't realize that from the district perspective as a savings. If that makes sense. That school is funded through the charter. And they have their own separate LCAP, their own budget cycle completely. Do you want to use a mic? Thank you.
Charter capacity is currently six hundred and eight students.
And how many do we currently have there?
Three fifty-two, something like that, three fifty, three sixty.
Okay.
Can you go back, though? I'd like to hear more about, no, 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 no. You can say, Vallejo Charter School, if that was a considered site to be moved or consolidated, can you still talk about, I mean, because you still have staff that would not be duplicated if you go to another site, or maybe that, so that still would be a savings. And then, the other aspect that was looked at was the location of the land, or maybe revenue from the land.
Correct. So, Vallejo Charter currently resides on what used to be Springs Town Middle School. That is a property, when we look at, actually, let me, I will get to a slide where we talk about bond money and school sites and where we've spent bond money. So, Vallejo Charter School's site, we have not spent the bond money on it, so it allows us the opportunity to put a site like that up for sale, which would generate revenue downstream. But not all of our school sites are available for that. So, Mare Island Health and Fitness is a school site that we would not be able to sell and generate revenue. It also has a very specific deed requirement. That site needs to remain a school facility. So, there was a question in a previous board study session regarding the cost to maintain a facility that might be vacant or not utilized as a school. So, this chart speaks to that specific cost associated with securing a campus. So, for each of these campuses, we have what the cost, the annual cost for fire intrusion and cameras, fire inspections, grounds and maintenance, just some one-time cost associated, and a rough, basic estimate of what the annual cost would be to maintain the facility.
There's no security listed. Like, how much would security be to, because I know we had some sites, it was very expensive to have security for that site. So, I don't see that column, but I appreciate these columns.
Right. I think, I think on this PowerPoint, there's a slide that discusses security, so maybe we can, oh, here it is.
You want to speak to that one, Mitch? Yeah, you can.
Sure. I mean, you know, so, what we have is a community where we find high degrees of theft and vandalism, property crime. And we are the beneficiaries of this property crime in some form or fashion on a weekly basis. Often, most often, you never even hear of it, but it happens regularly. The district secures its site in accordance with best practices. So, we have existing systems out there, fencing, alarms, surveillance, camera systems, fire systems, et cetera. And we're constantly reviewing exposure and security modifications. So, take an example Franklin, Franklin Middle School. Yes, GVRD uses the gym, but that's only one small piece. And we haven't had an issue at Franklin since we were able to restore it back from that substantial property crime we had about three years ago. We have employed private security services in the past. And Trustee Fox, what you're referencing is the Franklin issue and then the Farragut issue where we were hit to the tune of about five and a half million dollars worth of property crime between the two. Our insurer required us to provide site security, private security over there in order to, because all the systems were down. We were, we were getting hit repetitively, and so, we put twenty-four-hour security over there, which you recall is quite expensive, very, very expensive. I think that it was over three hundred thousand, it's about three hundred thousand per site, if I'm recalling correctly. The insurance company reimbursed us for a significant amount of that money. So, we were out maybe hundred thousand for each site. It's no small number, but it's, it's what we needed to do to combat the issues in our community. Since then, we have had, so most recently this year, we had a contract with two components. One was for emergencies. An example would be, we lost the entire security systems at Cave Elementary, so we need to get, we need to get twenty-four-hour private security up there now because we don't have the capacity to do that within the district. So, we had that component, and then we had routine eight-hour patrols on weekends. And that was just throughout the district and just to help, help us prevent any additional crime. And so, that, that, that amount was a hundred and, hundred thousand, I think, which is sort of in line to what we had anticipated and what we needed. We had to increase that, you may recall, we just had to increase that, and that was because at our bond sites in the late summer, we experienced property, those sites were getting picked off left and right. So, all four of those sites, we probably had some little crew running through town, and they were breaking through our fences, they were stealing their equipment, giant tractors, et cetera, et cetera. So, they had, they brought in their security for their stuff, and then we had to bring in extra private security in order for, for us to support completion of those summer work projects in order to get those kids back on August nineteenth, if that's the right date. But it was touch and go with, with the theft in the community. And so, you do, you're correct in that you recall significant expenditures. Most of that was, much of that was reimbursed, and then our ongoing private security costs have been probably within reason, I think, given, given what we're facing in our community.
Thank you. There was also a number of copper theft here in Vallejo, and some weekends, it was one night after the, and then the next night. And we're talking, that's, that comes out of general fund. So, that's fifty thousand dollars a pop one night, and then another fifty thousand dollars approximately the next night. That money comes out of our current general fund because we cannot submit claims to our insurance because our deductible is too high to cover. So, that is a frustrating thing throughout California, not just here in Vallejo. But here in Vallejo, like you said, we've been hit or targeted for a number of times, not just the issues you said, but for the copper theft. And it's really sad when it comes right out of your general fund because your insurance is up to your deductible so high that you have to pay for it. It can't be submitted because you submit too many claims, and they want to drop you. They don't want you to have insurance. So, it's very complicated, but thank you very much for your explanation.
And so, if, so, in order to secure a site, should we close one? We know we're going, we have to repurpose it, right? Just say Acme Elementary School, and we close Acme Elementary School. Well, maybe we convert Acme Elementary School to provide other programmatic facility for other programs. And, and so, as an occupied facility, while we get an appraisal for Acme Elementary, and we put Acme Elementary on the market, and we enter into an escrow with Acme Elementary for the next twenty-seven-year escrow, right? As, as, as we're facing with KB and the city of Vallejo. So, so, we would do our best, as we've done with Franklin, once we've got it back, and we're pretty comfortable with keeping it secure.
Thank you.
So, this next slide really speaks to the facilities master plan and some of the bond expenditures we have, at this point, utilized. So, you can see that for Stefan Manor and Wardlaw, there was fifteen million that were actively spent on that, on those two properties. Pennycook and Loma, another eleven million. Mare Island and Vallejo Charter, those sites have five and eight million dollars dedicated funds for future projects. But at this point, there's no projects that have begun. And that's important to note because it gives us the opportunity, speaking about those two sites individually. Mare Island's a little different because it's not, the way we're deeded with that property, we wouldn't be able to do things like sell it. But Vallejo Charter specifically on this list is a property we could then turn around to sell to generate revenue for the district because we have not utilized those bond funds yet to provide upgrades to that. Federal Terrace and Lincoln, we have used bond funds, thirteen point nine million for those sites. So, that if we were going down a path where we were looking at closure or consolidation of those schools, we would want to repurpose those facilities to stay within the public use for our district. Any questions from the board on these? So, this takes us to options, and I think this is really the bulk of where we'd like to have the board discuss where, where you're leaning, what are you thinking? Because this is where the direction we're going to be receiving as staff as we prepare for the regular board meetings in February, where we would be getting to a decision point around closure and consolidation. So, option one is when we, we went down a pathway where, and you can look at the FARC column, where it says permitted in current EIA. That means Stefan Manor, as a school, could be closed by the board because we have gone down the pathway, we've analyzed that school, we, we could talk about repurposing that facility and potentially consolidating Stefan Manor with Pennycook. In this process, in the seven-eleven committee, there was a suggestion to look at it going the opposite direction. How could we consolidate Pennycook into Stefan Manor? So, we did the, the data behind that, but you notice there's a no at the end because that was not part of the original EIA. So, if that is something that the board wants us to go down a pathway, we would then include that in the updated or new EIA. It wouldn't be ready for what we're calling Phase One of closures and consolidation. It would be a Phase Two process that we would review. So, I'm going to open it up to the board, any discussion on Stefan or Pennycook?
I would like to suggest that, personally, that this we would hold off for till Phase Two, to another phase, not the current phase, either one. That's me.
Then, I also would like to know, were traffic impact studies part of this? Because based on the two sites, I know one, I think, is a little more forgiving to add students versus the other. So, if that wasn't something that was looked at, I'd like to see something of, you know, if we are going to move this into a Phase Two, just to see which of the two would impact the community as a whole less. Because so far, his distance to get to and from, when my oldest was, I want to say he was like in second grade, maybe kindergarten, with the big fire at Stefan Manor, they had all the kids going up to Pennycook. So, I know that you can walk from there, and it's not an unreasonable distance. But adding more cars onto Rollingwood, anyhow, I, I think that's what I'd like to see if we're not, you know, if we move this over to Phase Two. Would transportation be a factor, like busing or anything like that? Either for, for, for either way, for Stefan or Pennycook?
Part of the reason we looked at these two sites in particular was that they were walkable. So, the distance between these, these two sites would allow for them to not have to provide transportation because that community could get to either school from where they're currently, their neighborhood schools would be. But that is something we, we looked at closely, the walkability of each of these school sites.
Um, is this on? Okay. I kind of, the Stefan Manor consolidation to Pennycook. And Trustee Flores was asking for a traffic, something like that? Okay. Hogan was originally a high school, and it had like fifteen hundred students there. And there was never a traffic problem there with Hogan and Pennycook and Stefan Manor. I know because I was vice principal. So, there, there's not a congested area there. Hogan is no longer a high school, so that's minus maybe five hundred students. So, there wouldn't be a traffic problem. But to get an estimate of, an expert to tell you what I just told you, that's fine. But I was there when it was fifteen hundred, and it wasn't a problem.
I, I think.
With the two schools open as elementaries.
Yeah. Well, I, I, what, what I would like to look at is more so what that congestion would look like at the site because I know that, for example, high school, you're going to have less parents driving their kids there because they're not elementary school age, so I think you have less traffic flow in that scenario. But I know when, when my son was at Stefan Manor, it could get pretty gnarly there, and folks would just jam up the parking lot at seven-eleven, and it, it, the congestion there was, was pretty insane. So, that's more so, not so much, is it doable? But more so, is it going to take a parent a half an hour to drop their kid off? is it doable, but more so, is it going to take a parent a half an hour to drop their kid off whereas it's taking them ten minutes now? That that's that's more of what I mean by kind of gauging what more students at Site A versus Site B would look like. Not not can the city infrastructure handle more people? It's just more of how's it going to impact parents dropping their kids off if you have to wait forty-five minutes because the line has now doubled because you have more students at at the at the one site?
Well, there's an easier flow at Option One. There's an easier flow because there's two, there's there's main streets running each way alongside of it and along. There's an easier flow.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Pennycook.
I would I would agree with that.
Yeah.
My student, my kids went to Pennycook when it was well over seven, eight hundred students and I dropped them off every day. And because you've got that four corners, you've got some main streets and sides where it's Stefan, you simply just have that one ingress and egress and it's very narrow. Around Pennycook, there's a little more space and they've got a system for drop off along, is that Baywood? Whatever one of the one streets that is, where they they have kind of this process for drop off on the side lot. So I do know that it had been quite a lot larger at one time when my kids were there and drop off wasn't a major issue with the space around Pennycook. Because you've got the back, the front, the side, got lots of ways.
I remember when I've been at Stefan Manor at dismissal, it's very congested on the street in front of it. But I think like you're saying, Pennycook is much more because the streets and it's not as congested. So just to clarify, trustee Flores was asking for drop off and pickup congestion with numbers of kids, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I also think it's important for for us to remember that in some ways this has already been tested. There was a moment of time where Stefan was part of Pennycook because of the fires. And I I wasn't here at the time. I don't know, I can't speak to the experience for parents at that time. But that that was tested before. I don't know if Mitch, do you remember how that went? You were here at the time or Dr. Young?
I think it went well because people felt a sense of community, right? Because everybody's displaced by the fire, so you had more patience, you know, more love for your fellow man, so to speak. And and to and to Dr. Young's point, Stefan Two was over seven hundred back in the day. And so, yeah, and as were all of our schools. Right now, though, if you look at our schools and traffic, it's worse than it's ever been. Going back to that patience, right? Culture has changed. People are less patient, people run around buses, they they drive over streets. They disregard a principal's request to not do that. So the cu- culture has shifted. Invite you to come out with me sometime and you and spend a morning and you'd be amazed. But all of our schools at one point in, you know, fifteen, twenty years ago, had twice as many students as they do now.
Thank you. So at this time, is it safe to say that we're looking for a different phase for this option? So we can move on to the next option?
Yeah, my understanding from the board is that this would be a Phase Two. What I'm gathering from the board is that this would be a Phase Two discussion consideration, looking at potentially years twenty-six, twenty-seven for any changes here. Yes, you are. Okay, I'm going to move us to Option Two. So Option Two is looking at Mare Island Health and Fitness. And I know there's a lot of words on this screen, but essentially we're looking at Mare Island, the closure of Mare Island Health and Fitness coupled with a relocation of Vallejo Charter School. And you can see the fact, the factors, the fiscal benefit. We talked about the bond money not being used at the Vallejo Charter School, giving us the option to sell that property to generate revenue. The Vallejo Charter School is, as a charter school, a choice school that is not tied specifically to a residential neighborhood. So it can be placed at any location within our boundaries. And then we did, we did examine the current Mare Island Health and Fitness population. It is also a choice school, has a magnet school. We know that it serves some students that reside on the island, but also students who come into the island. And as part of the equity impact analysis, the board can move forward with a school closure and a relocation of Vallejo Charter. So I want to open it up to discussion and questions.
This option, I do like this option. I want to go forward with this option personally. Closing Mare Island Fitness and moving Vallejo Charter School students to that location. But I wanted you to understand that the students that are at Mare Island Fitness, there's capacity for both to remain. So Mare Island Fitness students, now Vallejo Charter students, there's, you look at the capacity there too. Both can fit in that space, especially because eighth graders are moving on. And also some of the questions that I've asked. So you would have priority for the Vallejo Charter students, you would have priority for the Mare Island Fitness students to stay on that campus? And you would also look forward having priority to residents in the boundaries of homeowners on Mare Island? So those would be the three preferences for that school going forward. Also, I asked questions about a charter school, can you change parts of the maybe some of the parts of the charter has gone really well, maybe some needs to be refined, just in, and time everything evolves. So involving the charter, perhaps maybe things that haven't worked, maybe looking into other aspects, since both of them are a magnet school, perhaps combining some of the magnets of both schools and also maybe combining maybe arts or something else that it would be still that magnet school, but with even more to draw to. And I think knowing the parents, some of the parents at Mare Island Fitness and at Vallejo Charter, I think getting those two groups together, they're very, from what I can tell, very like-minded. And I think they would be, I think it'd be very well mesh, myself. Anyways, I just see a lot of positives there. So that's my own personal opinion.
This is a really good option, but the only thing that I am really concerned about is the displacement. I I want the the just, I want the, if that happens, I want to make sure that the people that are being displaced at that particular time have the number one option to stay. That's very important in building relationships when you're doing something like this. And the people that are coming in to that space understand that it's a team now and that they're going to have to be receptive to some of the things that are are already in place or going to be. The other thing that trustee Fox was stated that I'm really for is that we need to gather together, since this is a good opportunity to gather together, the different programs that are working and have them maybe placed in that one particular school. That's a, that's a key advertisement right there. You have performing, what is it? We have art? Yeah, and then we have the fitness and then we have the other. So that would be a key advertisement to bring people over back into the school or staying into that school. So the displacement is 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 my major concern and the quality and the number one priority as far as options of those people that are being displaced. And even the people that are coming in, they might not want to opt in, but give them the opportunity to choose where they want to go, except, you know, just instead of just placing them in their boundary areas.
Trustee Flores?
Just want to make sure, I don't want to. Well, I I just had a question so far is for for clarity, you know, being that it is a charter school, they're they're, they have their own budget, they have their own LCAP. Can we mesh and can we influence how their programs within the, that they currently have? Or is it that the way their school is and their and their program, that it's basically just superseding anything that that Mare Island currently has and that can maybe get added in is, or or how does that work? Just?
Thank you, trustee Flores. Yes, that is a possibility and the timing is actually quite perfect because they are coming up for renewal. Their current charter expires June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and so we're anticipating the submission of a new or renewal petition, which could certainly incorporate a lot of the unique characteristics or programs or what have you from Mare Island into the Vallejo Charter renewal petition itself. As a, and and then just marry those two concepts so that it's fully described in educational program description within that that charter itself. And then that is essentially what they would be implementing if their charter is renewed for a subsequent term. So there is certainly that opportunity to do that. So it's less of a consolidation and more of maintaining the charter school, moving it over to the site, but then carrying over some really great programmatic aspects of the existing Mare Island program right now and and incorporating that into the charter itself. And perhaps more, right? And I think that's why even having some some collaborative efforts and communication between the two would be nice to kind of see what that might look like, if that is ultimately the will of the board to move that forward.
Um, question. The way I understood what your explanation is this, the Vallejo Charter will bring its programs into Mare Island intact. Can we tap into those programs and offer other programs or does that has to be a written proposal to tap into their proposal as a charter school?
Right, and I know that that can be a bit confusing because it's all on how we're, how how we're, how we're trying to envision this playing out. So the way it would look is that the Mare Island Health and Fitness Academy school or program would close. VCS would move on to the campus of Mare Island and it would be providing an educational program that aligns with what is included in their charter. But remember, they're up for renewal and so there could be some revamping, reworking of the language of the programmatic offerings, various other components of, you know, of the charter school. Because that would be for the start of, it would be Ju- July first, twenty twenty-five moving forward, right? So in the interim, if there are certain components of Mare Island that are very favorable, well-loved, you know, within that school, that could be integrated into the charter itself if everyone's in agreement, such that they could implement that as well as part of the charter program. So the Mare Island School would no longer be operating as Mare Island Health and Fitness Academy, but again, those key programmatic components could be built into the Vallejo Charter Program should the children that are currently attending Mare Island decide to enroll in the charter school and remain on that same site that Mare Island was located on.
Okay, my next thing is, who's going to be responsible for to doing that amendment, amendment or whatever add-on?
I'm going to pass the mic on. Oh, she has one, okay.
If that's, if that's going to, if that is a possibility of happening, that's maybe two programs that you're going to attach on as an umbrella to that other, right?
I I think the writing of the language will have to be pretty craftful. They're working on their draft right now, what Vallejo Charter Charter Council would like to see happen, like to continue as. And so we're already kind of collaborating on some language. If there are specific things and we can get into specificities, what are those specific things that the community wants to retain? Because the the charter school uses the EL curriculum, but they also use the same district adopted curriculum. They have expanded learning, they have the arts, they have lots of programs that already exist at Mare Island. They're doing PBIS, which is at Mare, so so we have to get to the specific, what is the thing that we're seeking to retain? And then add that into the language in the in the petition.
And and what's nice about this is that they function as what we call a dependent charter school. Yeah, instead of an independent, so it does allow for greater collaboration involvement in the writing of the educational program by the district.
There's a buy-in there. There's a buy-in and an acceptance, so I'm assuming that that's going to be part of the agreement. Because a lot, I've seen it happen before, that programs are integrated into major programs and they don't exist. They're integrated into major programs and they don't exist. Do you understand what I'm saying? You have a program that's already substantial and sustainable. Then you decide to bring in another program and this is already foundation. You find that in doing that, if you don't have accountability and you don't have buy-in, these programs fall off. And you still have this one standing.
It will need, there will need to be some artful, you know, like you said, buy-in to get everyone on board. And the the thing to remember too is that, you know, there could be some staff mergers, there could be some staff movement, everything won't be a hundred percent the same. And, you know, as they're, as they're writing the draft, we can be thinking about the language of what goes into that petition. Because whatever the petition is that it's approved, that's the program. And so if there are key components of programs that are happening at Mare Island that are really high quality, that should be maintained, we just have to make sure the language gets into the petition because the petition defines the program. But the Charter Council must also be in agreement with that. So it's definitely not a, you know, slam dunk, you know. It's not just Heather's say, right? It has to be worked on together.
And there's a district oversight component, of course. I mean, obviously, the the oversight looks a little bit different for our independent charter schools as it does for a dependent, just because you manage the budget and the staffing and all the other details. But that could certainly be something that we ensure that they're implementing those programs with fidelity, that they're not dropping off, if that is obviously a priority in addition to ensuring that they're implementing the petition as it's been written.
So I understand that there's going to be some major collaboration. Since this is part of Phase One, will it be enough time to do that? To to get an understanding on what's necessary, what we're looking for?
Well, first I'll say there's never enough time. But the the draft is in process now. The current principal at VCS is, you know, supporting the draft writing. They expect to get a draft to us next week, which I'll send to Leslie to help me start reviewing and unpacking the details and making sure that it's sufficient. And we can start having conversations about what are the programs that we need to make sure are identified or that are at least referred to in such a way that that what is great about Mare Island isn't lost in the process. But, you know, community is community and and some of it's, some of it is undefinable, what makes something great, right? It's the people that make it great. So, you know, it's kind of hard to say that it'll be exactly the same because it'll.
Thank you.
Change is good.
But I think also, like attorney Leslie Locker said, Vallejo Charter has to have this done by June. So this process is already in the timeline that we're looking at. So the revisions and then merging the programs together and what's best of both programs. And if we add in more arts or something like that, then I think it's just, it's a win-win for both. And it's still a magnet school for what both parents were looking at at this site. When parents were looking at the other site, they're still going to get plus plus more. So it's actually a win-win because they're going to get more program and more benefit than what they had at their other site. So I see it for the students, a lot more opportunity. So I see it for the students, a lot more opportunity and for the parents, so.
So in bringing these, these together, are you thinking about how that's going to impact the teaching, the teachers?
So there's closure and consolidation letter, uh, language in the VEA contract um, that the district has to adhere to with regards to, um, staffing and identifying the needs of the site. What we try to do, because we have gone through this before, is we try to maintain the integrity of the staffs that are impacted. Um, we know that when we close and consolidate, we move teachers typically with kids. However, because there is a seniority process, we'll have to look at, um, you know, those folks who are more senior in the organization, who maybe have been working longer and determine where their assignments will be. But we usually start off with identifying, um, the seniority based on those two sites. And then we start making adjustments based on that. And then it'll kind of fall out as we're placing and identifying who goes where. Um, we have to make sure that we're assigning people based on their seniority. And not just seniority at that school site, but seniority in the district.
So. Based on their seniority, I'm, I'm, I've got a regroup in my mind what's going on here, uh, what I went through, okay. They're, they're categorized according to seniority.
Yes, but there are also, um, criteria picking language in the contract. And since I haven't done this in about five or six years, I'm revisiting it right now. Because the last time we did this was when we, if you recall, when we closed Franklin and moved Franklin to Hogan and then closed Wheatonman and moved Wheatonman to Solano. So, um, there, there's specific criteria for who gets assigned where. And also, we have to look at seniority as a big part of that. So like, for example, at Mare Island, they have a lot of veterans, senior teachers. There's not a lot of new, new teachers. So a lot, some of those folks who may opt to stay, because whenever you're impacted by closure and consolidation, you also have an option to, to say, hey, I want to stay, I want to move, or I want to stay, or I want to transfer. We have to take care of those folks that are impacted by the closure and consolidation first. And it's all based on seniority.
So in that process, sometimes the creativity and the, um, the creativity that that particular staff brought to that program is lost.
No, not necessarily. So for example, um, if you recall, maybe it's been a while since we've done this, but we will bring language to the board that PKS language when we're reducing or making programmatic changes. So we bring, it's particular called particular kinds of services. And so sometimes the criteria will be adjusted based on what is needed for that particular site or program, right? So that also comes into play.
That's what I was trying to get to.
Yeah, exactly.
I wanted to know if there was going to possibly be an adjustment.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Everyone good? Okay, go ahead.
I'm kind of jumping a couple of options right now, but it, it ties into this. So I'm looking at the, the language and the action part of Option Two. Uh, so far as the updated attendance area for, for Federal Terrace and Lincoln. What, what happens to that? Because when I look at Option Four, I, I look at that as something that also needs to get pushed back to, to a Phase Two because of the lack of the, uh, EIA, uh, study. So that, that's for, and Option Four addresses, like I say, Federal Terrace and Lincoln. So what happens to that for now? Is it that there's going to be no redefining of boundaries until something occurs there? Or, or are you guys still going to redefine the boundaries? And push the students to, to those places? Um, that, that's my first question. And then the second question for Vallejo Charter School. I- is there a student plot point so far as where the students come from, from Vallejo Charter? Do, do we have anything like that?
I do, I have a visual. I'll get to it after I answer the first question, I'll, I'll show it around the room.
Okay, and then the next, and, and in regards to that, would, would then transportation costs come into play? If Vallejo Charter is moved, or is it because it's a charter, it's just completely separate? Because, okay.
So let me, let me try the, the first question around the attendance boundaries. If we were to go with two A and two B, right, which is, um, closing Mare Island and move Vallejo Charter over, as, as we think it through, um, the charter school boundary is the city of Vallejo. It, it has no defined boundary except for city limits. We also think that the residents of Mare Island, those students who live on Mare Island, the Vallejo Charter School out here on Mare Island through the petition, this would be their home school. So by definition, Vallejo Charter would be their home school because they live on the island. Everybody else that goes, currently goes to Mare Island is bussed in. There's about twelve kids, I think, that live on the island that go to Mare Island. Everybody else is either bussed in or they live throughout the city limits as well, because this is a choice school. So I'm understanding Dr. Young, where she says those current students at Mare Island would be incorporated if so, if they so choose, they get to so, choose to remain at Mare Island as a Vallejo Charter School student. That is, those students that are currently attending. For the students who are not currently attending, we would redefine the boundaries because Mare Island has a component of their boundary on the other side of the water. We had, we carved up Lincoln and Federal Terrace boundary, uh, some time ago. And there's a small segment where the people that live in that small segment between those two schools come to Mare Island. And, and they're all bussed in, right? The students who, who, who call Mare Island their home school and live on the eastern, uh, part of the, western part of the mainland, um, are all bussed in or their parents drive them in. So we would just simply move the Federal Terrace Boundary over to, I think would be Tennessee Street. And then from Tennessee Street over would become the Lincoln Boundary for, um, as, as we continue to grow Lincoln from its current configuration of a K-two to a K-six, K-five. With each successive year, we increase one grade level. So we would in fact need to revise the current Lincoln and Federal Boundaries to absorb a piece of the boundary that's currently aligned to Mare Island. Follow? So did I capture the busing question too? Because all the students out here, either their boundary is on that part of the island or they get bussed in. With the charter school out here, there would be no reason to, um, have transportation out here. And one, and one of the issues, one of the benefits to the district in very trying time is transportation.
So how, how does that, how are we going to help the kids that are currently being bussed in? That, let's say the kids that are currently being bussed in the Mare Island that want to stay at Vallejo Charter, but then we don't offer bus services to the charter school? How, how are we going to service them?
Well, for, for those students who, who live in that small attendance area, I mean, we haven't thought, we haven't really thought that aspect of the question. But I guess we can continue a couple of runs, you know, for, for the next year or so. Um, and so we, we would bus in that small portion. If a student lives, um, attends this school and lives up by Wardlaw, they're not being bussed in anyway, mom or dad or grandpa is driving them in. So if they choose to stay here and they live in any other area, they would still need to find their own way into school.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not worried about them because like you said, they, they get busted, or excuse me, they get driven in. But wh- when I leave most mornings down the block, I'm watching fifteen, twenty-plus kids get on a school bus to get brought over here. What happens to them if we don't offer busing services now that it's a charter school? That, that, that's, I think that's something that needs to be addressed ASAP.
I think we have to keep that consideration open for the current Mare Island Health and Fitness students. And it's something we would eventually phase out. But I think right now, for those students that are receiving transportation, we'd want to keep that in play.
What I don't want to happen is what happened, again, what, that I found out at Lincoln where a kid that was living two blocks away wasn't allowed to get bus services because they weren't part of the move over to Highland. So they had to walk to Highland because the family didn't have transportation. So that, that's, that's, that's a key thing, right? We're talking about equity and, and whatnot, make sure these kids are getting it.
While he's doing that, just to keep.
In changing boundaries and stuff like that, re, redefining boundaries, isn't there a process that we have to go through?
The process is we do it and we bring it to you for, for approval. You, you make, it's, it's a formal action by the governing board.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. When, as you're getting that information, just to move the meeting along, um, it sounds like for this option, two A seems to be what I'm hearing and, but with these aspects connected to two A. That the Vallejo Charter School students will go move to the new site, first priority. That the Mare Island Fitness students that are currently at Mare Island Fitness will have the right to remain. And that Mare Island residents will also have a priority. And the second aspect that I'm hearing is that since the charter is being renewed currently by June, that we're going to look at merging key aspects of Maryland Fitness to marry with key aspects of Vallejo Charter. And perhaps even add more arts or whatever. So those are the, what I've heard to be discussed for Option A. Is there anything I'm missing? We are going to continue the busing for the one aspect of students that live between Lincoln and Federal Terrace. But all other students that do their private are going to continue on their own. So it'll remain the same transportation. Okay.
Now, does that cost, is that incurred by the district now? It, it, that's, that would be a part of Vallejo Charter's budget? Or, or is that a possibility to write it into the, the charter, into their, into their charter?
Okay.
Here's, here's a diagram of, the scatter diagram of where students at Vallejo Charter live in the community. I'll, I'll pass it around the table because it's hard to see from here, but, uh.
Okay, Board, we're going to move to Option Three, which is Loma Vista to Solano Wheatonman. So when the EIA was developed, we were looking at Loma Vista, and there's an Option Three A and an Option Three B here. Option Three A and B combined is a full school closure and consolidation of Loma Vista to Solano Wheatonman. That is an option that still is available to the Board if the Board chooses to do that. That would be a phased one school closure that would take in effect this coming school year. We've also discussed a phased process where we move the middle school component of Loma to Solano Wheatonman for next school year and then revisit the TK to Five as part of Phase Two in, in that discussion. So I will turn it over to the Board to discuss and ask questions.
With this item, um, looking at Three A, the middle school, which is approximately eighty-eight students, moving to, uh, Solano Wheatonman, that is something, um, I'm definitely for. Um, as long as they keep getting, maybe have access to farm, um, components or. Um, Three B, I have to talk with my educator hat on, just have to. Um, having a farm next to a school, you have agriculture, you're teaching students how to farm and garden. You're teaching students about, um, livestock. And it's an aspect that many cities do not have in the Bay Area. We're fortunate to have that aspect. It's kind of like a magnet that parents would maybe choose, um, to have their child at a school learning about agriculture and livestock. So that to me is a huge plus here in Vallejo that we've had. So as an educator, I know we even have students come from other school districts. My district has sent kindergarten students, I think it's five dollars each. They come in, they get to tour and see the animals and, um, tour the farm. So, um, I just feel that that's such a vital asset here in Vallejo that again, many cities in California do not have. Um, to be able to utilize that and maybe increase or use that agriculture and livestock thing to increase pro, programs and standards and curriculum, I think is such a great thing to have. As far as the middle school is so small though, moving to Solano Wheatonman, I think that would not be that big of a deal. But I also see that having that farm there, I just can imagine that other places in the Bay would be, are envious of that. They wish, that they could have a school sitting right on the same lot as a farm and as agriculture. So I just want to bring that up, that that's not something common. And that I think, looking at our resources in our city, and those that have been here for a while, it's, it's just something I think we have to consider. A school sitting on itself with just a playground, that's, that's great. But we're talking about something much bigger than that with Loma Vista. So I'm having a hard time with Three B for those reasons, um, because of the educational benefits of having that farm. So that's just where I'm coming, I'm fine with Three A, but Three B, I think I personally would need more time, like a phase, a different phase, like Phase Two or beyond, just to talk about or looking at other models of the few farms that are within California and school districts and how they are utilizing and how, what their growth is. And how is that helping with standards and with, with the students? And are parents drawn that they want their children in that environment? So I guess I need more information for Three B before going forward with that. So that's my own personal feeling.
Um, I'm noticing in the action, the relocation of special education programs to Mare Island fall of twenty twenty-five. What's that look like? Because you already have a program that you relocated there already, uh, and it's.
That would be, that would be a change.
Charter. Oh, did I catch a boo-boo or something?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're saying that's not just put.
If, if Mare Island is closing and Vallejo Charter is moving there, that then would supersede.
Okay, thank you, I didn't think that was crazy.
No, it would supersede that.
Okay, I, I was, yeah, I was fixing to say that is, that, no. Sorry. Sorry.
With option three, this is something we can consider for phase one.
Yes, also.
Option three A, three B, partial consolidation, full closure and consolidation can be considered as part of phase one. All those options are available to the Board for, for Loma Vista.
Trustee Forrest?
I agree with you in the sense of the uniqueness of having the farm. But I also just wonder if it's something that's, with, with the closure of the school complete, you know, would we not still have access to the farm? Even the kids that are going to be moved over or consolidated over to Solano-Wideman, wouldn't they still have access to the farm? Wouldn't they still be able to do all the same activities they currently do, but just from a different building? Would there be, would there be any impact on what they can or can't do with consolidation?
So just moving the middle school students from that one building on, on the, on the site down to Solano-Wideman, of course, everybody has access to the farm, including Solano-Wideman. I think we were talking about should a future phase close, close the elementary school, you know? But we would need to, if we ever close that school, we would need to determine the future of the farm as well at that time, whether we keep it open or not. But simply by moving the middle school down, does not change anyone's access to the farm. It's still fully operating and Solano has access, Loma has access, everybody has access.
So I think the question is, if, if we were to choose three B, where you're closing the whole school, how would that impact the students? Because you're saying now that if you're doing that, where you're closing the elementary school as well, now we have to figure out what to do with the farm. Is that correct?
Not, no, not necessar, so maybe someone else wants to save me here. But, but if we were to close the elementary portion, it doesn't necessarily mean that the farm must close. The farm is an independent entity operated by Friends of Loma Vista Farm.
Okay, that.
Right? Which is a nonprofit. Now, we support the farm as well significantly. But the primary day-to-day operations is, is managed by the Friends of Loma Vista Farm, supervised by the principal of Loma Vista Elementary.
And I think that's where my question is, if, if the closure went to the full site, elementary and middle school, how would that impact those students' access to the farm? Would, would anything change program-wise, access-wise, anything?
I don't think, I don't think if we repurpose it for like, did we talk about expanded learning or something? We'll still have a presence. So the kids, the kids that move down to Solano will still have access to the farm, Solano-Wideman.
As I hear even Mount Diablo Classroom has access to the farm. So the farm is accessible to all of our schools, right? And some of it's a field trip, right? If students at Patterson want to visit the farm, they can, but that's a trek and we know that.
And, and the reason I was asking the question that way is just to kind of confirm that if the school was no longer there, it doesn't necessarily mean that those students or, or that all the programs that we do at the farm, you know, with the farm, would be impacted, that the students would lose something.
No, the farm would still function. It's just the sort of regular day-to-day, not, that wouldn't get the same sort of use. But it would be available to our schools. And Solano-Wideman being the closest district school could still access the farm.
Yes, I think it's about thirteen minute walk. But I think what I heard you say is the utilization. I know also how busy all teachers are. And if you're at another site, then you have to plan and figure out when you're already bombarded with standards and getting in juggling act of try to getting your day-to-day schedule done and you're not being able to, something that was right on your campus probably is not going to happen because you're going to prioritize what you, your must-do and your can-do. I'm telling you, for me, I would have to, it would be too much. It would be very seldom. But when you're on the same campus and it's part of your standards, agriculture, how to grow crops, livestock. If it's part of the theme and the culture of your school and part of your curriculum, then it's right in your own backyard. You don't have to go anywhere. And you don't have to take time out of your, well, it's, it's in your schedule because it's in your own lot. So I, I do fear greatly that utilization, as you said, will decline greatly. And then we'll be looking at, well, why are we funding something that we can't afford for Friends of Loma Vista? So I see this also for the city of Vallejo, something again is a resource to the city. And I would like data to know how many cities in California have a school with the farm on it? Very few. So with that data, and again, I don't think it'll be utilized. Will it even, I mean, and within a few years, will it even be there? So.
Well, I, I would, just to play the devil's advocate, I, I would say I don't see why it still wouldn't be planned into a teacher's program. Why, why anything would change in that capacity? Because you have to go an extra quarter mile, if that. And being that we're, part of closure is about bolstering programs, we might have more funding to concentrate for specific things like the Loma Vista Farm in regards to teaching. And I might even be able to bolster it to more sites so that more sites could get there more often. So I, I don't think that, I, I think that's almost like a knock on the teacher's ability to adjust and, and adapt here in Vallejo. We, we'd be able to do it. Our teachers would be able to.
Well, if we're not utilizing it to the max now, and I'm telling you, looking you straight in the eyes as a teacher, we don't have enough time in each day. So in each day, if now you take something that I'm over here and you're taking, that I'm going to take more time for me to go do this, you just put more in my schedule just for the transportation aspect of getting to and from that I don't have. I cannot get through all the curriculum that I must do, juggling act each day. And anyone that's been a teacher in this room knows exactly what I'm talking about. So if you haven't been a teacher and you haven't lesson planned for every curriculum area that you must do each week, and now you're telling me I must figure out transportation, you just caused me a whole new dynamic that I don't have time for. Because I also have to do mandated PE each day, I have to do mandated ELD each day. So the mandates are priority. Then my key standards are priority. So if you take away the farm aspect of my culture of being on that site, it's not my culture anymore. My culture is that site, whatever the culture is. That's a fun thing. That farm over there, that's whatever, how far, that's a maybe. That's not a priority. It's a maybe. I hope you're understanding me really clear from an educator's aspect of time limitation. And it doesn't mean I'm a bad teacher. It means I can't, I have to do my must-dos, not my can-dos or maybes.
Just real quick, I don't think this is a matter of good or bad, you know? And no, I'm not an educator, nor have, nor have I been a teacher, so I don't understand tho, those concepts. But what I don't want to say is now all of a sudden, teachers just won't or can't. I mean, it, we could find a way, and if there's support needed, I think part of what this is all about with the closures and bolstering is for that to, to free up the ability to, to, to help within the district, to help teachers, to, to help programs. That's one of the key things of school consolidation, school closures. It's not just, you know, saving money. So, yeah, so for me, it's not about good or bad or, or whatnot. It's just about not limiting based on your experience as, as a teacher in your district.
Well, I also want to say that with declining enrollment, and when we look at that map of our students going down through the years, the limited resources that we will have to deal with, with more school closures and more programs, I don't see how putting money for a farm is going to be when you're talking about people's jobs. So anyways, it's a nice concept, what you're saying.
But we're doing that now.
But I don't see the reality.
But we're doing that now, right? So far as putting money towards the farm.
But you have a site there that's being utilized daily.
The farm or the school site? Because I'm talking about the usage of the farm for Solano-Wideman students, so far.
Can you give us information, how often Solano-Wideman goes to the farm and what grade levels?
Well, I, I think that's, that's kind of.
Or any of our schools, actually.
I, I think that would be partial data because what's currently happening isn't going to necessarily be what would happen moving forward with a consolidation and improvement of programs or what. But absolutely, let's find out how often Solano-Wideman goes. Yeah. But I, I think it wouldn't be the most accurate data to base a decision.
When I would say the question of how many schools use the farm, that's another question. Because if we are contributing to a farm, which I agree is a fantastic thing to have for students, is it fiscally responsible to fund a farm when we have schools that need funding?
So it'd probably go away if, in a few years, it closes school.
It could potentially.
Yep. And it's a resource to Vallejo, which I think we need to look at, what does Vallejo have as resources?
I just wanted to add kind of one additional thought on this, on this idea. And that is, I think one of the alternative uses of the Loma site has been to do an extended learning program, which could include after-school programs that could be tied to the farm, right? So there actually is the potential, I think, to bring in additional students from other sites within the school to kind of give them a structured way to access the farm and farm programs that may not be in existence right now. So just kind of one, one other thought outside of, you know, structured use of the farm as a part of everyday schooling. I still think you do have that extended learning option to kind of bring in, you know, farm use. And again, that would be at, at those facilities that are right next to the farm right now.
President Fox, I appreciate your perspective. It's, it's given me a, a new look on it. And I'm kind of leaning towards your perspective with having a school there on the site. Is it possible to have the extended, the, the expanded learning there with the K through five? Because I, I recognize your fear. Your fear is, is that it's, I mean, it's, it is, it's a magnet. It's something that's unique. It's something that could attract parents and students to the school district. And your fear is, is that if we remove all the students from that site, that it'll, it'll get used even less and then we'll have to try to justify why we're supporting it. Yeah, I get it.
I support that Loma Vista stays as an elementary school. And as far as the farm is concerned, that's my farm. I used to take my kids there to that farm. That has, I have memories there and that is nineteen, that was nineteen seventy-two when I came into the district. I think I started taking my kids to the farm in maybe seventy-four, whenever it started. That was an annual trip. And I was, took them each time. Now, we had a, we had a procedure at that particular time that every seven years, teachers changed, okay? Every seven years, teachers changed. If they had been at a school site for seven years, they've changed sites. I got the experience during that time to be in all geographical locations in this district. I started at Pennycook, I ended up at Wardlaw, and in between was Dan Mini and Elsa Wideman. Each school that I went to, I made sure that my kids went to the farm. That's an experience. You know, they, they find out that chickens do lay eggs. They found out that, that, that the llama needs orthodontic work. You know, it's, it's, it's an experience, an exposure. It was even an exposure to me to see how to milk a cow, okay? So that is an experience that, that is, it's, it's no words for. You just have to, it's a unique program. I would hate to see it go.
No, I went there with your kids, I guess, in nineteen seventy-two. I would walk there almost every day on my way home from school. Go past the farm and just hang out for a few minutes.
I think the farm is a very important aspect of, and unique to Vallejo City, Vallejo City Unified. I believe there, there has to be grants available to help upkeep and maintain that farm. And where we can actually bridge our other schools in, in terms of an expanded, expanded program so that we can utilize it a little bit better. Now, we do have to be fiscally responsible of what needs to get done. And we do need to still focus on, I mean, as much, Loma Vista, I mean, as we, as we heard, there's such an emotional attachment to Loma Vista and how much it means to, to all, to the Vallejoans in general. But, you know, I think we really need to focus and, you know, figure out what needs to, what, with the job in hand.
And just real quick also, I mean, I think in, in the process of this conversation, I think our emotions of the love of our schools and, and the community kind of obviously is in the play. So this isn't a conversation about closing Loma Vista Farm. This is a conversation about the school sites per se. So I think to go, to, to talk about all the benefits of the farm and what can happen, what can't happen, I think aren't part of this conversation, you know? So with that being said, I, I noticed that closing of the Loma Vista Middle School program only, there is no dollar amount attached to what the fiscal benefits would be. Do we have a number for that? Because I see that, you know, it shows what it would, what, what the cost seems would be for the whole school. But what is it just for the middle school? And is, is this just a delaying of what would end up being an inevitable closure of the site itself? Are we just delaying the closure because in phase two, are we going to come back and say, well, we need to close the elementary school as well? Is that something that could be answered now?
Just a quick question on the inev, nothing is inevitable. We have the ability to, to turn this community around in many ways, you know, not just us, but the city of Vallejo. So hopefully, there are no further closures if we close this year. Maybe there will be, but it doesn't necessarily have to be. That's my opinion. As far as savings on the middle school campus, the only change, we're rece, we're realizing most of the savings as a result of support personnel. There are three classrooms in the middle school, on the middle school campus. One sixth, one seventh, one eighth. Those three teachers would relocate, probably just relocate to Stefan Manor. I mean, to Solano-Wideman, excuse me, don't cross. And, but other than that, and then on that site, any expenses regarding utilities, security, things like that would probably, we would be working with the expanded learning program to assume some of those operational costs. Because their budget is substantial. They're, they're very well-funded through the state of California. So they can pick up, if they sort of have a dedicated facility, which we think it will be for the most. So they can pick up, if they sort of have a dedicated facility, which we think it will be for the most part, they can assume some of those costs, like say the PG and E bill on that side of campus as an example. The water on that side of campus as an example. Alarm systems, et cetera. So there can be a contribution from that program to sort of offset our general fund expenses. But it's really hard to capture at, at this moment. Unlike the captured savings for personnel. Right, that's clear.
So the after-school program was a separate entity?
Expanded learning programs are part of VCUSD.
Expanded learning?
I'm sorry, I've been trained. I was trained to make sure I said it right. Um, uh, they are, they have separate budgets that can be used for no other purpose, but expanded learning. Um, and it's very well funded and their funds can improve the site to their needs, to meet the needs of that program. It can pay for all kinds of programming. It can play for all of the, um, associated costs with running expanded learning. So, um, and, and as you know, we have to run thirty days of additional programming outside of the school year for nine-hour days. Their funding pays for all of that, right? So when they come before you and share all the exciting activities they're doing, they are, you know, maximizing the use of their funding.
Thank you for sharing that. Cause I know a lot of people do not know that they have the ability to pay their own way.
They have absolutely the ability to pay their own way. And so when we utilize space for expanded learning, it is not a hit on the general fund. In fact, we're just not allowed to use that money in any other way.
And in fact, the board authorized us to, to work with our architects and the expanded learning program to make some improvements, uh, throughout the district. One of them is at this particular facility and those improvements are multi-millions of dollars. And we're, we're waiting on the action of the board before we move forward with those final plans. It would make some significant improvements on that part of the Loma Vista campus.
I want to touch on something that Heather said about the thirty days of additional programming. That's part of the requirement of expanded learning. So if we're, we're, let's say we go down three A and we do three B and we make that a northern expanded learning hub. You have a campus now where you can do thirty days that does not interrupt any other program or facility. And it could be a thirty-day farm program. It could, you know, it could really use those services. Just something to consider because we, that, that is a pot of money that does impact the general fund in a positive way.
So could that scenario also be done if we closed the middle school aspect part just with that part and still get the exact thing you're saying, but still have a school, L, K five elementary school? Okay, so we can still benefit in both ways. And I think something else we need to remember is the more magnet schools or the more why parents want to put their kids and keep their kids in our schools, because we're competing. We are competing every day to keep school, students in our schools, not charter schools, in our schools. The more we have magnets, the why to come to this school. We have lots of schools that don't have anything connected to them. They have great programs. But if they don't have a magnet, then we're going to be looking at other schools for different phases. And because declining enrollment, that number you showed, closing schools and rightsizing the district is going to be going on for many years. So this is not a done topic. It's not even close to being done, unfortunately. But I personally would like to see magnet schools, we have cave dual language. We have Mare Island Fitness. We have Vallejo Charter. We have Loma Vista with a farm. Those are schools that are unique to Vallejo for parents to choose to have their children in like a magnet school. We also have schools that have specific programs. So I think we need to be very careful when we want the enrollment and we want the attendance. We need to look over our whole city and see which schools would parents get the most benefit and want and the why. Why are those ones going to bring students and programs? So that's another thing that we have to be very focused on. Closing a school to me that doesn't have a farm or a dual language or a charter or a. It's easy, and I don't want to say easier because it's still very difficult, but it's not a magnet school. It's not a why the parents would, oh, that's unique. Other cities don't offer this. I like that Vallejo has this, this, and this. I want my child in there. So I want to make sure we have an overview of selling our district of the why in which schools are magnets. And what's unique to Vallejo that is not unique to other cities in California. So I want to make sure we keep that as we go forward to be able to keep our population and that those numbers don't go down even faster. Cause we don't offer things that we could have offered or should offer. So I think we need to be cognizant of that.
Can, can I just echo on that a little bit as well? I mean, I, for me, my goal is that every school in the district is a magnet school, that every school wants to be attended. Because some of the things I've heard during this process breaks my heart. Because to hear some parents say, well, I don't want to take my kid to that other school. That, that's heartbreaking to those, to those administrators, to those teachers, to the staff that's working hard at those schools. And, and you have folks tearing them down, you know? And not even because of the school, but because of the neighborhood and the surrounding, which we have zero control over. So I, I want us, I want the district to be a magnet district. You know, I, I don't want one or two schools and everybody else saying, oh, leave those, I don't want to be over there. I want the district to be a magnet district. And I think this process in the hopes of bolstering our programs and raising our scores, because really as a parent, prior to my role on the board as a layman parent, the way I determine if I want my child to go to a school is what do the scores say? What, what does the safety look like? That's the numbers that parents, you know, we as a board, for better, for worse, have to do the business of education. But our parents do the, do the raising of, 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 of their children, right? So the numbers that they care about are the test scores. The safety, that, those are the numbers that they care about. And I feel like that's, that's the ultimate goal, I think, that we as a board are striving for. Not just magnet programs, magnet schools, but a magnet district. That it doesn't matter where that newcomer into the city or that new parent that's putting, enrolling their child in the first one, they are going to be jumping for joy because they went, they got assigned to Lincoln. Because they got assigned a federal terrace. Because they got assigned the cave. That, that's, I think, where, where my heart is in all of this. Because like we all know, it's, it's, this is not an easy process. It by any means on this, let alone for the, for the parents that, that are facing it, you know? And, and, and I, I want the community to know that, that myself as a, as a parent and a board member, I, I, I am fully understanding of the sacrifice we're asking you to make. Because it's not anything shy of that, that we're asking the parents to do for the greater good of the district. It's not that we're trying to close your school or end your program. We're trying to save the district. So I, I, I thank you. And, and I promise you that the sacrifice that you all are making, I am being at the utmost diligent and taking everything into consideration in, in my decision on, on all of these, that we all are. I don't want to, you know, I don't want to speak for all, but I, but I'm sure I know the heart of this board and the staff and the superintendent. You know, so I know that the sacrifices that are being asked of you parents. And I thank you for it and, and know that we're, we're not taking it this lightly. So, you know, I, I just look forward to the magnet district. That, that's what I want.
I would like to look forward to that too. But I think in our reality of looking at today, January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, what resources and what we're dealing with today and this year and next year and the following year with deficit spending and with declining enrollment. Unfortunately, our realities dictate other things. And when you look at test scores that are flat and we're hoping to move, um, through this and other processes, if you already have something in place with magnet schools that parents and community are happy with and that are working, I think you have to be aware of that. Not the carrot in the sky that could happen in five or ten years. You have to deal with what resources that are working today and then bring them up as fast as possible, all the others. I would love for this district to be a magnet district, but that is not the reality today. Hopefully it will be someday. So looking at the reality of today, what do our certain schools, how do they draw so we can sell attendance? So we can sell our schools that parents and community that moved to Vallejo would want of their students in our schools today in the near future? Yes, we have our goals. Yes, we have our strategic plan. Yes, we want our goals, our scores to go way up. But right now, dealing with that, I think we need to look at our reality that confines us going forward right now. And protect the resources we have going forward, especially things that draw parents. Not things that will make the community upset more than we're going to already. We have to value our resources and be careful of what resources that have been established for many years by many aspects of Vallejo. So that's why I'm very nervous about this Loma Vista thing. And honestly, I feel the farm would probably not last if we closed the school, not for very long. And we won't have the money to support it in reality because of our numbers and the reality that's shown on these slides. So anyways.
I'll just say that the magnet schools we have today, the programs that are successful were once carrots in the sky. So we have to look at that. We have to have a vision. We have to have a goal. We have to think about making it better as we're improving it. So that's the purpose of the strategic plan. That's the perfect, the, the purpose of the four pillars. Because there's our plan to get to that point. But to say that because things aren't where there's, where we want it to be today doesn't mean that we're not pushing for it or, or, we can do two things at the same time. We can deal with the reality of what's going on right now, declining enrollment, declining, uh, money. And we can also strive for a magnet district. That, that's kind of the balance, I think, that we're doing right now, you know? So, I mean, that, that, yeah, I'm going to always keep that carrot in the sky because that's where, that's where you got to start. Right, you got to start with, with that dream.
So where are we now? Let's keep it moving. Where are we now?
Okay, so we're going to move past Loma. And the last option we have here is really an option that we would, would look forward to a phase two. Uh, and that is the, the board directed staff, uh, once they received the, the seven eleven report to look at additional schools. And these two were added to the list to investigate if we could move forward with closure or consolidation. So federal terrace and Lincoln. And you can see the data there about what possible fiscal benefit, repurposing the site. The key indicator here is that it is, since it was not part of the EIA, we wouldn't be doing anything with these two sites as part of phase one. It would have to wait to be part of either a second phase or a third phase in the future. So really, the only direction we're looking for is, is this something we'd want to bring back as a phase two discussion?
I know for the public with Lincoln, people were asking, you only have seventy-some students. Why aren't you looking at closing? That was brought up last night, the town hall meeting. And as I said earlier, with the EIA, the, um, equity, we haven't had enough time to get that report done. And also at the state of California, we were told probably will not let us because of demographics in certain areas downtown Vallejo. Which is, makes me kind of sad that the state thinks they know more than our current jurisdiction. But anyways, we know our city better. One thing for this, that some of the thought was that if you close federal terrace and you take the TK students and move them to Lincoln, you've just put, increased that seventy-some students and put more into the school. Whereas federal terrace, I think, only has about one teacher per grade level. So that model was looked at since we were told that probably from our attorney, that because of the demographics, we probably cannot close Lincoln. So therefore, for the board, how can we utilize that and put more students and take resources that we need to cut from local, close proximity schools to be able to get to, um, the next closest school proximity? Uh, so that was one thought and one theory. What other things were? I know one thing that we've brought up with the city a lot that I have is the difference, and was brought up last night, is the safety outside Lincoln, which is out of our hands. We do the best we can. We have Lincoln School fenced off the best we can. We have it secured as best we can. But there's still undesirable activity on Sonoma Avenue daily that we, is out of our control. So we're trying to partner with the city of Vallejo to try to help with that. But again, that's out of our control. We're doing the best we can. So with these, this would definitely be a phase two, um, along with other sites too.
Well, you know, I, I, it's a shame that the, the state or the law, whatever it is, 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 is sitting up high and we're down here in, in, in the lowlands looking at what's actually happening in Lincoln, okay? The trafficking back and forth to the school, you know? And then they say that because of that particular location, we cannot shut it down at this particular time. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, so we have initial concerns that, that, um, w- once this would be further studied through the EIA's, right? So that's, that's, you know, kind of one of the initial issues is really more of a procedural one now, right? Is that we, we haven't had a chance to really study the closure of federal terrace or Lincoln from an equity perspective. Um, but when we look at some of the initial enrollment numbers and the demographics of the students at that site, there is some concern that if, uh, that if or when we move forward with doing a further study, uh, through the EIA, that there, there would be concern about a disparate impact on a large number of students at the school that fit a certain, uh, like racial background. Um, so, so it, it's not a foreclosed option at this point. It's just that it kind of raises a flag for us to want to really analyze that and make sure that we wouldn't be putting the district at risk from an equity perspective if we did make that, if the board did decide to go that, that, that route.
So at this particular time, Lincoln has how many students? Seventy-four? How many students does Lincoln, uh, does, um, federal terrace have? Two hundred? Uh, six hundred?
Two hundred twenty-two.
Two hundred, so you're gonna think about moving or closing federal terrace with two hundred and moving those kids to Lincoln? Is that a possibility? No?
Well, it's another phase, not this phase.
Not this phase? Okay, all right. It says, close Lincoln and federal terrace. That's the four C. And then close federal terrace, that's four B. Closing, so those are separate entities altogether, separate things to think about?
Yeah, they're being proposed as kind of three separate options, right? So you, so you could close just Lincoln, you could close just federal terrace, or you could close both. The issue though is that because, um, none of these options are contemplated in the existing version of the EIA, it's not something you can take action on, um, for implementation in this next year. So it's, we, we, you know, wanted to bring this information to you because there was discussion about these sites being closed. But it would, but, but it would have to be a phase two essentially. Because we would need to study the impacts of, of these closures in the EIA.
Anyone else?
I think if, if we're moving. I think if, if we're moving it to, to a phase two, I, I'd like to see what programs are gonna be in place once these sites were to close, if we go with either, with any of them, because if I'm not mistaken, all of these fall under bond, bond restrictions. So we can't do anything with the sites other than repurpose them. So I'd like to see what are we gonna put in there? So there's like a seamless transition and, and we could let, and the community would have something to look forward to based on, on what we find. So um, I think that's right. I'd wanna, you know, look at some more, yeah.
Where do we put the, the, the rest of the kids out of Lincoln? Where are they? Where, where were they placed? Highland, and are they doing okay there? So there's another question that comes to my head. We're gonna displace them and put them back at Lincoln? Or where are we getting these kids to do Lincoln?
The current second graders would rise to become third graders. And we would, if we grow back Lincoln, we would do it year over year.
Oh, it's a growing pain thing?
It would be.
Okay.
If, if that was the option selected, we would just grow it back year over year. Is that, if that's the question?
That is a question you answered, it's a growing pain, they grow, okay. Um, so we wouldn't bother the kids that are now settled in?
No, no.
Okay, that's all, that was my main concern.
So we don't need to decide on phase two then, it's options, it's there for us, but it's not. I personally would, yes. I don't know about others.
So just to summarize the, this whole night, one A's on the table, two A, two B, three A, three B is all in consideration for phase one. Correct.
Right, so in my, in my notes, uh, the Stefan and Penny Cook, we would reserve that conversation to a phase two approach. So we would not be bringing a resolution to the board to vote on regarding any closure or consolidation for Stefan and Penny Cook. So in regards to Mare Island, we will be bringing forward a resolution for closure and a resolution that, of the relocation of Vallejo Charter School. Right, and the enrollment options and things like that. And trend, yeah, with the, the remaining, the trans, keeping the transportation in place for those students who are attending Mare Island Health and Fitness.
And that, that whole structure would be included in a single resolution?
In a single resolution. So three is where I, I'm hearing mixed a little bit on three. And what we can do is bring forward two resolutions that the board can essentially hash out or vote on. We could bring a resolution that would be a full, full closure of Loma or a resolution that is just the sort of phased approach where we're only moving the middle school. Yeah, and you could always, yeah, I could, uh, phase two can get developed later as well because we, we, we might find in addition to federal and Lincoln, Penny and Stefan Cook, Loma Elementary, that there might be other programs or schools that we want to look at as a phase two.
Because I think some of us wanted more information on the elementary school at Loma, could that possibly be moved to phase two?
So I think you have two options from, from like a procedure standpoint. I think the first option that the superintendent is referencing is we could bring two, two options to you in phase one, right? So you would have the two Loma resolutions in front of you. And if the board decided, we just want to move the middle school program, you would approve one of those resolutions. If the board decided, we, we want to move the entirety of the, of, we would move all of Loma to Solano Weideman, you would approve the other one.
I, I understand that clearly. But I'm saying because we, there's been discussion of more information needed. That's what I'm asking, to just put that one on phase two now, if there's enough people that want more information on that one.
I think we would need to hear, I guess, my take on it is we would need to hear from the board that you don't want to be presented with that second option as a phase one option. Because that, that's what I'm hearing, right? So what we're offering is
But when would the information get to us on the second option? Because if I don't have that information by then, how can I make a vote? So I already know that I want to close the middle part, not want, but the, the middle part of Loma, that's already fine for resolution. But since there's so much information that I feel from the community and for myself that I need for the elementary school, how will I get that information by February fifth?
I would say you might not, and then you would decide to reject the, the optional resolution that is put in front of you. You would just decide to approve
But could we decide tonight so that it's less to deal with at that time?
The board can, the board can decide that.
And because the superintendent said, we must have multiple phases anyways, which we also described to the public last night, that phase one could only, doesn't need to be so many. And we could have more when we get more information for phase two. I just think being diligent and doing our fiduciary responsibility and gathering all information possible, instead of, to me, that's rushing. I want to make sure this is done very strategic.
So I guess I would say, um, I mean, we don't want to take action at this meeting because it's not agendized, but just getting some general direction from the board as a body about how they would like to be presented with those options at the next meeting.
I personally would like to go forward with A and then table B for the second phase until we get more information, but that's me personally.
Okay, can we, can we hear from some other members?
I'd like a little bit of more information on some of, on what we asked, yeah.
Okay, so would, so you would not like to be presented with the second option?
Um, yes.
At the board meeting?
Four, four A. And then um, or three, I'm sorry, three A. And then uh, uh, three B for phase two, yeah.
Yeah, so just to confirm what I'm asking, I want to make sure everybody understands. We're asking that we can bring two options to the board, right? So I'm putting aside the Mare Island option, right? That, we already know we're gonna bring a resolution for board consideration. Now, do we want a three A option and a three B option at this meeting? Or do you only want to see one option? My understanding is
I just, I just
Okay, understood, can we hear from the other members?
Yes, that would be great.
But we're not agendized, right? So even if there's a
We're not, we're not voting, we're not voting.
Okay, I just want to make sure because, you know, regardless of how many in favor. That was all, I just need to, I just want to clarify on that.
Okay.
I think I, I would go along with the fellow board members in this case and just, we just keep it with three A.
Only three A?
Yeah.
Okay.
I agree. Okay, so just to recap, this was not a vote for any action, we're just getting direction on if the board wants to see one resolution or two resolutions related to Loma. What I, what I'm sensing is only one resolution, that would be option three A, and that's what we will agendize. And for, for option four, there would be no agenda item, that is a phase two process.
Uh, I'm sorry, real quick, when, when it comes to three A, can we have a, a dollar amount of some kind on there? Because if, if it's based on savings of utilities, maintenance, et cetera, I'm sure there's past month's payments on whatnot, so we gotta get a rough idea, knowing that it's not gonna be the exact, but at least a rough estimate based on like six months average on payments on those areas where we're saying that we're gonna get the savings.
I think part of the reason, and I'm, I'm not saying we, we can't, we can't provide that. I think part of the reason that it wasn't included is it's, it's honestly like a very, it, it's an almost insignificant number, right? So this, this decision of one A is not really a cost saving, sorry, three A, three A is not really
It's programmatic.
Right, it's not, i- i- you're, you're not gonna see the, you know, like million dollar numbers that you're seeing for the closure of the other sites because it's just the, it's just relocating three, you know, three classes.
But isn't that about three hundred thousand dollars or more in just those three salaries with benefits? To move, take off the docket of Loma Vista to move, transfer to a different site?
I, I can respond to that. So moving those students
Not students, the teachers.
Well, well, that, this, if we're talking about Loma Vista, the middle school, the students would move. And so those teachers will be reassigned to a different site because they have a multiple subject credential.
But you're not on the payroll for Loma Vista, you're now on the payroll for Solano Weideman.
Or wherever we're filling a vacancy.
Okay.
Because those, because Loma Vista, there's, there, it's a programmatic difference. So when the superintendent said programmatic, those students are going to move to those sixth through eighth grade students at, uh, classes at Solano Weideman. And if you remember, it still runs as a middle, that part of the program is still middle. So meaning those teachers have single subject credentials. So they'll have teachers for two subjects as opposed to one teacher all day in a, in a multiple subject teacher classroom. So it is different.
Got it, but I think also there's a um, benefit. Mr. Posio, you're talking about, so now that that site is gonna be open for the middle school por- portion, you said that we can look into programmatic, I, I, what benefits and money that can be accumulated that someone else will have to pay for?
Well, not someone else, it's still VCUSD funding, but it's, but it's targeted money for the expanded learning program.
So can we get a, maybe a dollar for that or see how that's gonna benefit us?
Well, we, we can estimate the improvements and we've had conversations about some um, uh, site improvements. But we might do more if it's just gonna be a full hub. We don't have a quote for all of that possible work yet uh, for the site improvements. And then whatever current costs there are for cleaning and um, heating and, and electricity, those costs could be accrued by expanded learning since that's the program running there.
Okay, so we'll find that later, but it will benefit for having that site.
Yeah, those costs would be, whatever costs that are currently being accrued in the general fund would be part of expanded learning costs.
Awesome, all right, are we now on agenda item three? Yes.
So for the sake of putting my fiduciary hat on, in a sense, I'd like to see three B included in, in the agenda so far as the full closure of the school.
So now we are on three announcement of upcoming meetings, is there anything else before that? Are we good? Is there anything else before agenda item three? So the next meeting will be February fifth, Wednesday, it's gonna be at Mare Island Fitness Academy in their gymnasium, I think. And then the next one will be on the nineteenth, regular morning.
So we have some adjustments we need to make to that, um, based on the EIA, the Equity Impact Analysis. Because the last time the board saw that report is outside a full calendar year, we need to hold two sessions again with the, with the report. So now that's pushing off the final, final decision to the nineteenth. So we're most likely going to flip flop the locations, we will be back here for the fifth and we'll be at Mare Island for the nineteenth. It's just, it bumped the, the timeline a little bit because of the equity impact has to be presented at two meetings.
On the nineteenth. But the fifth will be here. All right, is there anything else before we adjourn? Thank you, everyone.
Yes, real quick, can we ask about just in general things or are we sticking to this topic?
Is it regarding upcoming meetings, agenda three?
No, no, this is just a, a general question.
I, I don't know, go to the order.
I don't know the questions, so.
Okay, well In regards to um, immigration rights information.
I don't think that's on the agenda, so I don't think that would be
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so with that, we are adjourned at, what time is it? Seven eleven, go figure. Have a good evening.